Good evening and welcome to the December 7th, 2015 Regular Commissioners Meeting. This is the meeting where the Board does their reorganizational meeting each year, the first Monday in December, per General Statute 153A-39. So, I'm gonna ask for nominations for Chairman, and then the Board at that point will elect a new Chairman, and then they will subsequently go through the rest of their reorganization with their Vice Chairman, all of their committees, meeting dates, bonds, and some other matters of business before we get into our regular meeting agenda this evening. So, without further delay, I'll ask for any nominations for the position of Chairman for the next year.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Eifert for Chair.
Okay, I was gonna ask if there were any other nominations, but there's been a motion to close the nominations, is there a second to that?
Aye.
And a second? All in favor of Commissioner Eifert as Chairman, please say aye.
Aye.
All against? Hearing none? Motion passes, and Commissioner Eifert, now Chairman Eifert, congratulations, and I will pass the meeting to you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Thank you Commissioners, I certainly will do my best. At this time, I'd like to open up the nominations for Vice Chair pursuant to General Statute 153A-39.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Lawhorn for Vice Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask the question, may I close, make a motion to close the nominations for Vice Chair?
Yes ma'am, you can.
I make that nomination to close the nom- to- motion to close the nomination, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion to close.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Ashutah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And all those in favor of Mr. Lawhorn for Vice Chair?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Lawhorn. At this time, we need the approval of the bonds. The first bond will be the Tax Administrator Clinton Swearingen for $100,000. The expiration date is October 28th, 2016. Finance Officer Toby Henson at $150,000, expiration date June 30th, 2016. Register of Deed Suzanne Lauder at $50,000, expiration date December 1st, 2016. And Sheriff George Burris, amount for $5,000, December 1st for 2016. It would be the pleasure to the Board.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the bonds.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Dennis and a second by Commissioner Burlson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd open up the floor for the slate to nominate for the committees, the Board, and the committees.
Chairman Eifert, I would like to nominate the following Commissioners to serve on the following Boards. Chairman of the Economic Development Commission Jan Lauder. Alternate Economic Development Commission Bill Lawhorn. Member of Board of Health Jan Lauder. Member of Social Service Board Gene McIntyre. Member of Library Board of Trustees Peter Ashutah. Member of the Airport Authority Tony Dennis. Alternate Airport Authority Chairman Scott Eifert. Chairman Fire District Commission Joseph Burlson. Member of the Almaw Downtown Development Commission Peter Ashutah. Member of Senior Services Board Commissioner Gene McIntyre. Member of the Rural Transportation Planning Organization RPO Commissioner Dennis. Alternate Member of the RPO Bill Lawhorn. Member of Stanley Water and Sewer Authority Commissioner Joe Burlson. Alternate Stanley Water and Sewer Authority Commissioner Gene McIntyre. Member of the Central Line of Council of Governments Bill Lawhorn. Alternate Central Council of Governments Commissioner Scott Eifert.
Motion on the floor?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Dennis. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Carries five-two. Okay, at this time, we need to establish the meeting dates for 2016. You should have a copy of those in front of you.
Chairman, Chairman Eifert?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make the following motion for some dates. Last year, we decided that since we had so many meeting- meetings in June for budget, that we would move on a he- only meet once in May, and move that to the third Monday. So, I would suggest we not meet May 2nd, and give our manager time to work on the budget more, but to also get it ready, well, school boards and all those ready by May 16th. So, I would suggest we do away with the 2nd and keep May 16th as one, a date for May. July 5th is on Tuesday, that's the week of the 4th, if, probably wouldn't have anybody show up to the meeting anyway, I'd say we suggest, or make a motion, we move that to the 11th, which would be the following Monday. And then, to make it more equitable in distribution from time to time, our August 1st meeting would be on the 8th instead of the 1st. And then, historically, since County Manager Lucas has been here, we have not had that second meeting in December, and I don't know how it got put back in, but I would make the motion that we not meet but once in December, let that be on the 5th of December. I make that in the form of a motion.
Thank you Commissioner McIntyre. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Dennis. Any discussion?
Just one thought, I know moving the, I think you, you said moving the July 1st to the 11th?
Yes.
I don't know if we should move it to the, at least to the 3rd, 'cause we meet on the 1st and 3rd, correct?
On the 3rd.
So, that way at least is consistent with one of our, just a thought, one of the days that we usually meet on the 3rd, 3rd Monday, rather than throwing the kink in with the 2nd Monday. That's just a thought.
That puts, that puts quite a bit of time between the June and July 1st, that's the only thing I would think.
Okay.
Say eliminate the May 2nd?
Yes, eliminate May 2nd. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question, and that's the May 2nd meeting and the May 16th. I know we're gonna have our retreat a couple of months earlier, but I'm just wondering if we need to eliminate the May 2nd meeting?
We do.
Because we'll be...
We can't eliminate it.
No, I'm saying, I'm wondering if we should or not, because of preparing and doing the budget workshop.
Well, I talked with Manager Lucas about that, and he suggested that we keep it at the 16th and not do the May 2nd. That gives them time, he, he needs that time in there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I believe, is that not what Commissioner McIntyre has made a motion here of, is that not kinda what we did this year, as far as the May, May meetings?
It is.
I believe it was, yes, sir. Okay. I, I thought it worked quite well.
Okay.
I mean, I...
If no more discussion, all those in favor...
I just wanna say real quick, I'm just not comfortable, I'm gonna vote against it, 'cause I'm just not comfortable, you know, as being paid to be a county commissioner to dropping meeting dates, you know, I think we owe it to the constituents to actually meet, 'cause I'm sure there's stuff that comes up on a regular basis that we can still go over.
We can always have a call meeting if we need it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd rather that it be on there, and it would be much simpler to eliminate the May 2nd meeting, if we could see that it was not necessary to hold one. I'm available May the 2nd, as I am May the 16th, and the other dates with the changes that Commissioner McIntyre proposed.
Okay, any more discussion on that? All those in favor as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I think that passes five-two. At this time, I just wanna make one announcement, during our regular meeting of the Board, the County Commissioners, in order to act in their capacity as Board of Governors for the Greater Baden Water and Sewer District, or for the Piney Point Water District, may, at their discretion, recess a Commissioners' meeting, and reconvene as the Board of Governors of either of the two above entities in order to conduct business matters related to the entities. And at this time, I would like to lead us in the vocation. As we remember today being Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, please remember all the veterans who have currently served in our military to where we can meet here tonight, in front of this great flag that we're, we're sitting in tonight. So, with that being said, if you would bow your head and let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, again humbly come to you, thanking you once again for this great county that we live in. Lord, I thank you for the people of this Stanley County, and Lord, I pray for our military and their families for the sacrifices they make during this holiday season. Lord, I pray that you'll be with the firemen, the EMS, the police, as they serve and protect us, and pray, Lord, that you'll be with them. And Lord, I pray that you'll just be with this Board, that we make the correct decisions for this, for this county. These things are asking your precious name, I pray. At this time, if you would, stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll continue with our, our meeting. You should have the agenda in front of you. Do I hear a motion, we approve, or any adjustments to that agenda?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve, the agenda is written.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Burlson and a second by Commissioner McIntyre. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we're at the presentation of the County's Audit for the year ending June 30th, 2015. The presenter is Kotain Chai Moses. I hope I didn't mess that up. I've been practicing, yes.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I apologize, I can't get my slides up and going, but you guys should have hard copies of the slides in front of you. But I'd like to thank you guys for allowing us to continue serving as your auditors. This is gonna be for 2015 Financial Statements, June 30th, 2015. And progress today on the status of the report, we submitted the report a couple weeks ago. The LGC is a little bit backed, backed up as far as approving audit reports, and so I have not heard that they have approved Stanley County's audit report yet. Usually, we don't see a lot of changes from them, but if there are any changes to these numbers that I present, thank you. If there are any changes, I will let you guys, I'll give Toby the changes and he can update you guys. So, we'd like to thank the Finance Staff, Melissa, Toby, and the rest of Finance Office Staff. They're always a real pleasure to work with, and they're always ready for us, they're knowledgeable and cooperative with the items that we ask for on the audit. We really enjoy working with them, and we always look forward to coming to Stanley County. I also want to thank Donna Turner and her, her staff at DSS this year. We've had a hard year this year with the single audit compliance testing, with Department of Health and Human Services grants, due to additional procedures that the state auditor wants external auditors to do, and of course, due to the new NC FAST system. But Donna has always welcomed us this year, every time we've asked her to come and visit her department, she's always been available for us, so we'd like to thank her and commend her for that. For 2015, our firm has issued an unmodified opinion. That means that we found no material misstatements that led us to believe that the financial statements would be misleading to its readers. That means you have a clean, and it's the, a clean opinion, and it's the best opinion that our firm can give. So, Stanley County has passed its audit. We didn't have any findings or question cause relating to finance grants or DHHS grants, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies were noted. So, general fund summary, the revenues for 2015 increased compared to prior year by about, about $730,000. Expenditures increased approximately 8.4 million. If you look here, the revenues here, they don't include debt proceeds that the county received, but on the flip side, the expenditures include debt service where the motorola lease was paid off. And the reason for that is, the debt proceeds don't show up as revenues on your financial statements, they show up as other financing sources. So, the revenues, your sources of dollars are a little bit skewed here, because we didn't present other financing sources with revenues on here. With that in mind, the actual increase in expenditure for the general fund, without the consideration of the debt service for the motorola lease, was a 1.6 million increase from the prior year. And we'll talk about some more of the revenues and details, and changes from the prior year in, in the upcoming slides. So, fund balance serves as the county's, a measure of the county's financial resources available. We have assets plus deferred outflows minus liabilities minus deferred inflows, gives you your fund balance or your net position. So, in 2015, there was a new audit standard related to state retirement pension that created a new classification on your balance sheet. So, when you get your audit report, you're gonna see this line called deferred outflows, and that relates to the new state retirement pension that we are now, that we now have to show on your financial statements. It is actually a non-current asset in the current year, but you will also see a deferred inflow for, for pension deferrals as well. So, there's three different pieces to the state pension liability that have been put on your books, and you'll see two of them being assets, and then one of them being a liability type account. Deferred inflows include unavailable revenues such as prepaid taxes and taxes receivable. And then, down here, we have the five classifications of your fund balance classifications, and this is, again, a few years ago, we had standard changes that now require that we present five classifications of your general fund, fund balance. So, for 2015, the county ended with non-spendable fund balance of about $67,000, restricted fund balance of 4.7 million, committed fund balance of $500,000, assigned fund balance of 3.4 million, and finally, unassigned fund balance of $11.5 million. So, available fund balance is important, because this is, and we'll show the county's calculation in the, in the next slide, but this is the calculation that's utilized by the local government commission to compare you to other units in North Carolina. The calculation is total fund balance minus your non-spendable fund balance minus stabilization by state statute. So, this is how Stanley County looks like at the end of 2015. We have available fund balance of 15.6 million, which is an increase from the prior year of 1.2 million. And then, if we look at that as a percentage of your general fund expenditures and transfers to other funds, we end up with 27.8% for 2015. And this percentage is important, because the LGC requires that you have 8% to meet a month's worth of expenditures, so that's what they recommend. So, look at Stanley County at 27%, you have almost three and a half months' worth of fund balance. This percentage is used to compare you with other peer groups, your size, and other units in North Carolina. So, if you get below the 8% that they recommend, or if you get below your peer group level, you, Stanley County would get a, a unit letter from the local government commission. So, the fund balance over the last three years has increased. 2015 looks like you had an increase of 1.1 million. Expenditures exceeded revenues by $5 million, but then the, the debt proceeds that were received under, under other financing sources makes your total change in net, your total net change in fund balance of 1.1 million. So, the top three revenues for the county include adverallorm taxes, restricted intergovernmental and local option sales taxes. The top three revenues make up 83% of your total revenues. If we look at adverallorm taxes, we see a decrease of approximately 0.4% from the prior year, so it's comparable to prior year, but you had a slight decrease, and this can be due to the prior year's revenues showing double billings for the new tax and tag system implementation. So, this year, you didn't have all those double billings that they did last year for the registrations. And restricted intergovernmental, this part, this category includes state and federal and local grants. And so, we see a 3.8% increase from the prior year. One of the grants that you had this year that you didn't have in the prior year was a Golden Leaf Grant. And local option sales taxes, we see an incre- increase of 11.2%, and the increase is due to the increase in the article sales tax distributions received in the current year. The top three expenditures of the general fund include human services, education, public safety, and those come in at 66% of total general fund expenditures. And then, your other expenditures, the 34% consists of your general government function, transportation, environmental protection, economic and fiscal development, culture and reg, and your debt service. So, the top expenditure in the general fund was human services, it increased 0.6% from the prior year. So, it's pretty comparable to prior year, but the main increase here is gonna be salaries and benefits in that function. And then, we see education, a 2.8% increase from the prior year, and the increase is due to the public schools' current expenditures amount. And public safety, also an increase from prior year, 1.6%, but again, that's mostly in salaries and benefits. So, if we look at the enterprise fund for the county by fund, we have, we see operating losses in the Greater Baden and the Piney Point District, and just to let you know, this is on full accrual basis. The operating expenditures that are shown here are shown with depreciation. So, it's a little bit different from the expenditures that you'll see in the back of the audit report, once you get your report, and the difference is going from modified accrual basis to full accrual basis. Greater Baden had depreciation of $172,000, so that's included in the $604,000 expenditure that you see, and then Piney Point had $1,500 in depreciation expense. If we look at West Stanley Waste Water Treatment Plant, the, the variance between the two years, last year, you only had two months of operations, and so, 2015 is the first year that you have a full year of operating expenses and revenues. The depreciation that's included in the $556,000 is $182,000. So, if we look at the utility and airport funds, we also see operating losses in 2015. The big part of it is the depreciation, for example, the utility fund had depreciation of $657,000 included in that number, and then the airport fund had 1.2 million depreciation expense. So, if you're looking at just operating, and you take out those depreciation, then you, you may or may not possibly have a net lost, loss, or not quite one that big. And that is the end of my slides. I went through that pretty quickly, so if you guys have any questions on any specific slide, or any of the funds that I presented, I can answer that for you.
Okay, thank you ma'am. Any questions from Mr. Chaim Moses?
Chairman, I do have one question, only available fund balance, we're at 27.8%. How do we rate among our peer group?
I did, I didn't look that up before I come, and even if I did, the, the local government commission on their website, they have a comparison with you and your peer group as of, available as of 2014, because they don't have all of the 2015 reports in yet, and I believe last year, when I looked, you guys were right there with the average for your peer group. I can look it up again and give Toby, 'cause it, last year, it was as of 2013 financials when I presented. Would you guys like me to look up the 2014 and give that information to Toby?
I would, and I, do we by chance know what the average county percentage is throughout the state?
I can give you that as well.
But that would be interesting information.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Lawhorn, I'll look that up and I'll give that to Toby to forward on to you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't have that available with me at the moment.
Any more questions?
Chairman, could we recognize County Manager, I think he's got a little more information about that.
I was gonna say, we, we have all that information that you're talking from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, I have an entire book, and I'll be more than happy to give it to the Commissioners, and it's got our peer group, it's got every county in the state, and what their fund balance is, and we, 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 last year, we were at, right about the average, it was 25%. Obviously, we don't know this year yet, 'cause they all haven't been approved and it hasn't been posted yet for the North Carolina Association and LGC to do that analysis, but at 25%, we're staying consistent with our average peer group. So, and some of the statewide, it's roughly that same amount, but a little bit, sometimes it's a little bigger, because a lot of the coastal counties carry much bigger fund balance percentages, just because of the, the issues they, the risk they have from storms and other things.
Exactly, that is true.
Thank you, sir. Any more questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'd entertain, entertain a motion, we accept the audit as presented. Motion by Commissioner Dennis, second by Commissioner Ashutah. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Number two, the appointments for the Board of Equalization and Review, our presenter is Clinton Swearingen, Tax Administrator.
Good evening Chairman, members of the Board. Here tonight to request that we get two members reappointed to our Board of Equalization and Review. It's a very important board that hears discrepancies and appeals on tax values between the county's values and what they feel it is. Those two members are Jerry Burlson and Vicki Long. Mr. Burlson and Ms. Long were both appointed on January 23rd, 2012, and they've both been faithful and dependable members on the Board of ENR for the last four years. They were both part of the 2013 revaluation, which I feel is very important, because by reappointing them, that puts those two back on the Board for our 2017 revaluation and gives that experience that I think is important during a revaluation. So, I'm simply here tonight to ask that Jerry Burlson and Vicki Long be appointed to the Board of ENR with a term that'll expire on December 31st, 2019. Would you be happy to answer any questions?
Any questions for Clinton?
Mr. Chairman, if I would, I would like to get permission from the Board to abstain from this vote.
Make a motion to grant the permission to abstain.
Okay, I have a motion to abstain, Mr. Burlson. Mr. McIntyre, second by Commissioner Lawhorn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reappoint Jerry Burlson and Vicki Long to the Board of Equalization and Review.
I have a motion by Commissioner McIntyre. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Lawhorn. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you Clinton, appreciate it. At this time, we have a Planning and Zoning, ZA 05, zoning request for venture properties, and our presenter is Mr. Michael Sandy.
Thank you Chairman Eifert, Board of Commissioners, County Manager. For you tonight is ZA 15-05, a rezoning request for, from venture properties, the property owner, the request rezoning from RA to HB Highway Business. The applicant requests rezoning a 1.79 acre portion of a 9.7 acre tract, tax record sec. 609. Property is located on the south side of NC Highway 73, near its intersection with Millimport Road. Purpose of this request is to use this property for retail purposes. The adjacent properties to the east, west, south, and north are in Kennedy zoning jurisdiction and are zoned RA residential agricultural. Several properties in the Millimport area and Highway 73 intersection are zoned general business and highway business. Property is not located within a flood zone or a water supply watershed. Water and sewer are both available to this property, and traffic count per NC DOT has been studied in 2014 at approximately 5,700 cars per day. Planning staff recommends this request due to the fact that the requested change is located in a growth area in accordance with the Stanley County Land Use Plan. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sandy?
Commissioner, Chairman Eifert?
Yes, sir.
Two questions. Is this on the corner there of Millimport Road and 73, right cat of corner to the business that's already there?
No, it's actually between the school and the intersection, on the same side of the school.
Isn't that the old fish camp building?
It's not a building there, it's an open field between the school and the intersection. It's not a building there, it's an open field um, between the school and the intersection on the south side. It's open, I think it's a soybean field right now.
Other question. It says it's for retail business, and in somewhere it states that this is the type of business, when either, what is the business?
Uh, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think it's a Dollar General.
Okay.
Any more questions? Okay, at this time I'll declare a public hearing, open. Uh, anyone here to speak for or against the rezoning request?
Good evening Commissioners, thank you for your time. My name is Savannah Weiss, I am with Venture Properties out of Wilkes County. Um, it is for a Dollar General in the Millingport area. We have done market research that has uh, determined that this area is underserved. Um, and so we are requesting that it be rezoned to put the store there, to uh, provide jobs for the area, as well as bringing in tax revenue. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? At this time I'll declare the public hearing closed. It'll be the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Commissioner Burleson.
A motion, Commissioner Dennis, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Yes, I do. Uh, at this time, uh, we have the appointments for the Skuzza Transportation Advisory Committee. Our presenter is Mr. Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Um, the board tabled action on this item, uh, I believe two weeks ago, or the last time you met, which actually may be three weeks ago. Um, and for uh, a desire to get a few more nominations, there actually are, are um, applications, there are some additional applications for your consideration this evening in the packet. And so uh, staff is kindly asking for your consideration for the appointment of uh, folks to the Skuzza Transportation Advisory Committee. Terms from January first, twenty sixteen through December thirty-first, twenty seventeen. Be happy to answer any questions.
I see one question, I see one more application here, Kerry Hathcock. Are there any others?
I understand is that's the only one we received.
Can they take other people to the advisory committee? Or is this the, I mean, is this, this the limit, or can they take one or two more?
Commissioners, I would like to, um, my name is on there for the city of Locust. I'd like to ask my name be removed and uh, Tim Fesperman, our city administrator, be uh, added in my place.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, I would like to make a motion um, to replace you with Tim Fesperman, City of Locust, and add Kerry L. Hathcock to the list. Um, I believe he's the only application that we've got on file, isn't that correct Tyler? And uh, uh, the other names uh, that are on the list currently.
Okay, I have a motion, Mike.
I'm confused, are you saying to replace? What, did you, Scott with Kerry?
No.
Okay, I just didn't hear that part.
Yeah.
So you're okay with Scott with Tim, and then adding Kerry, correct?
Mr. Chairman, let me clarify the motion. The motion is to replace yourself, Scott Efer, with Tim Fesperman, uh, representing the City of Locust, and add Kerry L. Hathcock to the list.
Thanks, sir. I have a motion by Commissioner Burleson to remove me, uh, City of Locust, and add Tim Fesperman, and add Kerry L. Hathcock. And I have a second by Commissioner McIntyre. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion also carries. At this time, uh, we'll get, uh, the mandatory code of ethics, and our presenter is Andy Lucas, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Uh, in your packet you have the uh, code of ethics that per general statute one sixty A dash eighty-six uh, requires uh, affirmation each year. Um, as, we, we typically do this as part of your organizational meeting. And so you have in your packet the uh, board of ethics that was originally approved back in two thousand ten. And uh, where s- staff has presented it this evening for reaffirmation, December seventh, twenty fifteen. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lucas?
I do have, um, Chairman Efer. Oh, we do need to take the ethics course, two hours, is that correct, everybody?
That's correct. It, the way that works is uh, you don't, you, you take it when you're elected. So if you were elected this, I guess, the folks who are elected in j- December, well, November of twenty fourteen, who took office December of twenty fourteen, had one, have one year to pres- to complete that ethics training. If you haven't done it, they, they offer it on an annual basis, and we can, we can get that ethics training and, and make that available through the School of Government to anyone who hasn't taken it. Typically, when you go to new commissioner's school, that ethics block is caught, and so a lot of folks pick it up then. Um, and then every time you're reelected, you have one a year to, to do that. So um, it's not something that's mandated every year, that, that two, it's just mandated every time you're elected.
Do I have five that need to be?
Uh, if, the five who were reelected in, or elected or reelected in twenty fourteen, um, have that year to do it, I think majority of you took it. I don't know if, I don't, I'm, and Tyler keeps a file, she keeps a file of all the folks who get the certification and have it. If there's any member who hasn't, or feels like they need to take it, we can get it from the School of Government, and we can actually make it available to you, so.
I have taken one for another board, does that?
Um, we'd have to check and see if it, it's there, it, it, the state has its own ethics training, and then the, then there, then there's another one for local government. And so sometimes it meets the requirement, other times it doesn't. And the state one is actually more, more rigorous than the local government one. So um, as long as you have a certification from any state board, you'll be, you, you should be fine. Uh, but if, if not, um, if it's something less than the state boards, then you, we probably need to have you take the local government one.
That's okay, sir. We want to make sure everybody's covered. What be the pleasure of the board? I have a motion by Commissioner Long, and a second by Commissioner Dennis. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries also. Thank you. Uh, next item is pre-fiscal year twenty sixteen, seventeen budget discussion, and our presenter is Commissioner Shuto.
Appreciate y'all giving me the time on the agenda tonight, as we start the new, the new year. Um, I just want to look, just want to look ahead for the budget, for, for the budget for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seven thing, just things to consider. And just want to throw in a little personal thing, I, as y'all know, I have Vack and Dash, it's been there for eleven years. And what worked for me ten years ago doesn't work today, what worked for, with me five years ago doesn't work today. That's just how life is, you always have to evaluate, look forward to what worked yesterday. May not work today, or may not work tomorrow, so this is part of the looking ahead. First thing that I'd like y'all to consider is perhaps setting up a Parks and Recreation Fund. Now, I know we mentioned this in the past, is um, perhaps some dollar amount, maybe a hundred thousand dollars a year, maybe a quarter million dollars a year to set aside for Parks and Recreation. I know that we, we really spend no money on Parks and Recreation from the county. So that leaves a burden up to the different cities and the different municipalities. And um, you know, if we were to do that, there's a couple ways you go, go about it. One is to just give the folks money on a per capita basis, based on, you know, population, stuff like that, let them do what they want. Or else another idea is to have that fund for capital purposes. It's kind of like for, for, for one-time projects to help them out. It's kind of like what we do with the Rotary, and the Rotary Club, for a while they were giving money to people, and that became just part of their general, the nonprofits, it just, just became part of their every-year fund, I mean, bu- uh, budget, and they expected it. Then a few years ago, we changed it around to where we try to work on bigger projects that'll have a lasting impact and one-time projects, so they're not committing to. And I know that like Al Marle, they're, they're working on a sports complex right now. I read where Locust, I think you guys have the restroom facilities you're, that need help with down there. Then you have in Oakboro, and I saw where they, they got a beautiful park in Oakboro District Park. And I saw where they renamed it Alan Smith, I think it's Alan Smith Memorial Park. Or, but I thought it was pretty interesting reading the article about, he had a vision years ago about creating this park. And his vision became a reality, and Oakboro's a better place to live, you know, because they have nice recreation facilities, parking recreation. You go down there anytime, daylight hours, and you see people using it. So anyway, that's just something, something to, to think about. Um, if we do something like that, I would prefer, you know, something with project-specific funds. That way, as, as municipalities needed, they can approach us, and we could help alleviate the burden, because these fit, city facilities are being used by county residents all the time. Um, second thing, talk about is schools. What I'd like to do is, we get closer to the budget time, is to sit down with the Board of Education and have a meeting, and this time use a facilitator. I really think it's important to have a facilitator with the Board of Education, and try to gas, get a grasp on the funding needs they need, for not only for educational and the facility needs. Um, you know, I want to get much into the school system, but we do, one thing we, we do is they need, they're going through a change right now, and I think we should have better communication and a meeting with the facilitator would help as we get closer to budget time. Some staffing issues, I know the nine-one-one, we need to look at the staffing of nine-one-one, especially as we go into our new emergency um, radio system. I know that there's been, I've had talks from different people about how they need a little bit, little more staffing down there, so we have to evaluate that. And also I'd like to look at the entry level pay of our EMS, emergency medical services. We seem to have a high turnover, I was talking to County Manager Lucas about it. It seems like if they see, will stay with us for like that three or four years, they stick with us. But that entry level, we might be lower than, you know, some of the surrounding areas, and some, some of these people just jump around merely because of pay. The Ag Center, you know, we've been approached by the arena, you know, to help with the arena. And I know we're, we're doing a little study on that. But also, I'd like to look at, like, maybe revitalize and looking at, looking at how we can better utilize the Ag Center itself. I know that we're, Stanley County really is lacking in places for meeting spaces and for banquets. And I'd like to, that front end, me and Commissioner Dennis have mentioned before out there, about taking that front area where the windows are, and kind of moving it out, giving us more space and kind of squaring off that area to, to better utilize the facility. The other thing, we had some, some folks here a couple meetings ago. We'd have to, and this will be like a one-time shot, some of these things. Of course, the nine-one-one staffing and entry level EMS pay, that's something that would have to work into the budget every year, cause that'd be a continuing expense, expense. As well as, you know, everything we've looked at with the demographics of Stanley County is that our citizens are aging, and they're, we're losing the school age kids, but we're gaining an elderly population. And one of the things, we had a request for the expansion of the senior center, out to have more presence out in West Stanley, and of course, that would be a continuing budget item. And then we just really have to look at economic development projects and see what kind of funding might be needed for economic development projects to, um, help keep our county moving forward. Anyway, that's, that's just some things I want to give you guys some thought for, and just to think about over the next few months, cause it's going to be, budget time's going to be here before you know it. And, you know, as we try to move the county forward, we have to constantly evaluate. You know, is what we did three or four years ago working today, and what do we need to do to be moving forward in the future? Thanks for y'all's time.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question if I may.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shuto, I, I agree with you on uh, the item about the EMS funding. Several other things that you mentioned, um, we've talked about a sales tax increase, of course, um, that it will be on the ballot in March. Um, and ways to fund certain things, as you know, and the rest of the board, it, a lot of our dollars are stretched very thin currently. Um, do you support, or would you support um, a property tax increase to help fund these items?
Yes, I would support doing what is necessary to properly fund our government. If we need to, I mean, we're so set on this sixty-seven cent rate, you know. I'm not set on that. If we have to, we have to, if we don't have to, we don't have to. I could go e- either way. But I am open-minded in looking at the needs of our county, and trying to, trying to um, find a way to properly fund it.
So you do support a property tax increase?
If we need it. If we need it, and I know why you asked that question, but I'll tell you right now. We thump our chest saying we have not raised property taxes in how many years? That little percentage, when in fact, you know, we have needs in our facilities around here with the schools. If we need to raise property taxes, cause that sales tax doesn't pass, to help put kids in safer schools, I am for that. Now, I'm not for raising property taxes just to spend money, just for waste money. I'm, I have an open mind to look at what we really need to fund as a government entity, and try to, you know, raise the proper money for it. Or else I know, there's, there's seven of us, I'm just one. You know, we can go into this, say, telling Andy, okay, we're not budgeting a penny above that property tax, sixty-seven, sixty-seven cent rate. Cause the reality is, we're based on the rate, but when the, um, they can help with it, and Clinton can help. A few years ago, we had a reduction in property taxes for people, because the property tax rate was at sixty-seven cents, and everyone's, most people's property values went down, so they actually paid less in property taxes than they did. So, you know, I'm all for doing what it takes to make Stanley County a better place to live.
Thanks, sir.
Chairman Efer.
Yes, sir.
I would like, uh, we're talking about next year's budget. I would like for us to look at our external memberships, the cost of those memberships, and ask ourselves, are we receiving benefit that would cover that cost? If we're not receiving benefit to at least cover the cost, then we may need to drop some external memberships that we're members of, because just to pay out dollars to be a member, and we're not receiving dollar-for-dollar or more benefit, uh, those are tax dollars, in my opinion, that are not being spent wisely.
Thanks, sir. Anything else? All right, we'll move on to number seven, the consent agenda.
Chairman Efer, uh, before we do that, uh, point order, please.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'd just like to make a motion, we talked about our meetings a little while ago, and I talked with uh, County Manager Lucas, and really, he doesn't have anything pending for December nineteenth, and I would just make a motion that we cancel our December nineteenth, I'm sorry, twenty-first meeting. December twenty-first meeting, I'm sorry.
I have a motion that we cancel our December twenty-first meeting, and by Commissioner McIntyre, and a second by Commissioner Dennis. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Motion carries. Six, one. Consent agenda, number seven. I have a motion by Commissioner Dennis, and a second by Commissioner McIntyre. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. Uh, public comment, did anybody sign up? All right, no one signed up for a public comment, so we'll move on. Board comments and announcements and committee reports, uh, Commissioner Burleson.
Thank you Chairman Efer, and congratulations on uh, being our chair. We uh, I certainly look forward to having you this year, uh, to lead us uh, through the upcoming uh, business this year for the county. Um, the only thing I would like to state is uh, had a pleasure last Thursday night of going out to Stanfield and seeing the swearing-in of several of their new commissioners in Stanfield. And uh, I know Norwood is having theirs tonight, and uh, I believe uh, Monday night a week, Oakboro's doing theirs, Red Cross, I'm not sure, I, I think Rich Fields is coming up soon. So uh, just look forward to working with everyone that is uh, getting on those boards uh, throughout the upcoming uh, next, next few years, and uh, that's all I've got.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner McIntyre?
No comment.
Commissioner Lowery?
Yes, since we're canceling the December twenty-first meeting, I'd like to wish everyone wellness, happiness, safe travels, and a blessed Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis.
Wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Long?
Uh, I know the commissioners probably have uh, read this update, but I want to give this, in case somebody's watching this uh, meeting. It's an economic development update. In the past six months, we've had uh, sixteen projects, they're active projects in the past thirty days. Um, five of those sixteen projects have had additional information, which is a thirty-one percent of the total pros- active proj- projects that uh, have been worked on. This little economic update. Uh, also, uh- Also, with a sad heart, this past weekend, we lost a great supporter of our county and of the City of Albemarle. Most of you probably have heard that Dr. Bill Hatley lost his battle to Lou Gehrig's disease, ALS. Bill loved Albemarle and in particular, his hometown. And he worked very hard along with his wife on the A D D C Beautification Committee. Matter of fact, he and his wife were often downtown Albemarle, pruning the flowers and watering the flowers. And a lot of people don't know those type things, they don't notice them, but I know Bill loved Albemarle. He also had invested personal funds in several buildings and downtown projects with other people that are involved in trying to make Albemarle Downtown more vibrant. He, he, he truly had a passion for Albemarle. So, please keep Bill and his, please keep Bill's family in your prayers during the coming days. His funeral will be Saturday at Central United Methodist Church at eleven o'clock. And Bill was a dear friend of this county and the City of Albemarle and dear friend of mine. Thank you.
Yes, he was. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Shudo?
Just two things. Mayor Harrison of Baden is retiring or leaving office and I think they're having a reception for him sometime this week. And I appreciate his years of service out there in Baden. And then, secondly, congratulations to the Pfeiffer's Falcons soccer team for taking home a NCAA Division Two National Championship to Stanley County. And so, good job, Pfeiffer. And I just want to give a little report. Dr. Colleen Keith, the new President of Pfeiffer, gave a report at Rotary, which was kind of interesting. She talked about how Pfeiffer is going from Division Two to Division Three sports. They put in their application for that. And she had some sound reasons for it. She, it was, was a really interesting speech. And we talked about what worked, what I talked about earlier, what worked yesterday may not work today and tomorrow. She said they sold their building that they had in Charlotte. They got it like ten million dollars for it or something like that. And they're still going to have a presence in Charlotte with Pfeiffer, but they, she says, it's better for them to have the money than the, than the building. She also talked about Division Three sports. Because as y'all know, the difference between Division One, Division Two, and Division Three sports is that you do not get academic, you do not get athletic scholarships in Division Three sports. And she said what was interesting is that last, this summer, they lost thirty-five kids who put deposits in at Pfeiffer and then went to school elsewhere. And they called all thirty-five up, not to try to recruit them back or anything, but just to ask them what the situation was. And not one of those kids went to another school because of athletics. It was all due to academics. And they're just trying to focus back on academics and they'd rather give the money for academics than to, than for athletics. And then, someone else from Pfeiffer told me that, you know, some of the athletes that they give money to, they don't last the whole four years. So, they'd rather focus and get back doing athletics. And she was happy that they, they now have alcohol sales up there at Pfeiffer because there's more that they can do to try to grow that, grow that community. And, and I just always, thought it was a very interesting speech. And she made, she made very valid points on the direction that they're going in. She said they're actually looking into perhaps getting a football team now that they're going to Division Three. So, that's all.
That's great. Thanks, sir. A couple things I have, I won't keep you very long. A lot of us had the pleasure last Friday to go to the county's Christmas party and we, we were greeting a lot of people and they came in anyway when they seen us at the door. But we have some of the hardest-working folks here that work for the county. I certainly appreciate, you know, all you guys and you three up here that work really hard and it was our pleasure to, to go out and do that. Chairman Lauder and Vice Chair Dennis, I certainly appreciate your service to the, to the Board as Chair and Vice Chair this past year. Look forward to two thousand and sixteen with this Board and thank you so much for your faith in me. As Chairman, I certainly appreciate that. And I'd just like to say Merry Christmas to, to everyone. Hope everyone has the merriest Christmas and a Happy New Year. With that being said, I entertain a motion to adjourn. I got motions flying all over the place.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you.